Good morning, everyone. I'm John Colwell and very pleased to be back in downtown beautiful White Plains, New York, at world headquarters for the New York Power Authority. And to again be joined by my fellow trustees, Tracy McKebben, Mike Balboni, Judge Nakandry, Dennis Traynor is again joining us via video. He's still hooked on Zoom. I'm sure we'll get him unplugged by September. Dennis, great to see you.
Good to see you.
Most notably, we're thrilled to be joined today in person by our newest board member. And welcome, B Gonzalez, to the NIPA family and the NIPA board team. B joins us from Syracuse, central New York representative, on the recommendation of our good friend, Joni Mahoney. We're thrilled to have her expertise, knowledge, experience, community relationships, you know, sitting at the table, as well as her perspectives along in distinguished career in the world of education, in combination of SUNY Binghamton and primarily Syracuse University for the last 36 years. So, but who's counting, right, B?
Who's counting?
Exactly. Trust me, I'm not. You know, I guarantee you, I'm not. Happy to keep going. So, as you'll learn, I've got a great organization, an incredible team throughout NIPA, and we think a great one around this board table as well. So, we're excited to have you join us and look forward to your many contributions in the years to come.
Thank you.
Welcome.
It's been one of the best onboarding's I've ever experienced.
And I'm sure you haven't gotten a better breakfast than Sheila put out for us today. So, with that, we'll welcome Gil and the rest of his team, who are scattered literally across the country, as well as the region, some of whom are here. Gil, Sarah, as I look on the screen, Eves are elsewhere and zooming in. And we'll progressively navigate the hybrid model in the months to come and hopefully collectively be able to be back together. So, with all of that confirmed, that once again, this meeting's been duly noticed as required by open meetings law, so I'm very pleased to call to order this joint session of NIPA and Canal Board. I assume we've all had an opportunity to review the agenda along with the 1,400 pages of other materials. And so with that, I'd ask for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Some more.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. As the agenda states, as we typically do, we'll start our meeting in exec session. We'll do our best to maintain some pace and get back into public session as soon as possible. So, if I could, ask for motion to conduct an exec session, excuse me, to discuss the financial and credit history of a particular corporation pursuant to section 105 of Public Officers Law.
Some more.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, and we are in exec session. So, thank you very much. We'll be back shortly. Everyone, if I could, ask for a motion to resume our meeting in open session.
Some more.
Thank you, Michael, a second. Tracy, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We're back in open session, and as always, no votes were taken during exec session. We've all been polled relative to any potential conflicts, relative to approvals to be had here, unless there's any changes. I think we're good to go with all of that, right, Karen?
Yes, we are.
Okay. All right. Gil, zoom in and kick us off.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, trustees, NIPA leadership and NIPA staff. This will be a team CEO report. I will start, like as always, I will start with the scorecard and some update on our strategy. Eves then will, Eve Noel will then talk about how we evolved our key performance indicators, our scorecard and our dashboard to track our progress with Vision 2030. We will have a special guest, Joy Ditto, who's the president of the American Public Power Association, to make an important award. And then Lisa Wansley will talk to us about our scholarship, Future Leaders Scholarship Program, as well as our PTEC internship program. And to wrap it up, Christine Pizzo will give us an update on our return to the workplace plan, especially now with concerns about the Delta variant. So, with that, let me begin with my report with the scorecard. This is the new scorecard that we have put together to track our monthly, we use this monthly, we issue this monthly, but this is really to track the day-to-day operations of the Power Authority. I am pleased to report that all of the key performance indicators are green, meaning that we are tracking according to our plan. And that is the credit to all of the employees of NIPA and the Canal Corporation. Next slide, please.
With target setting, you like to be green coming out of the gate. So, well done, Gil and team.
Absolutely. So, some of the highlights, preserve and enhance value of hydro power. That's our strategic initiative number one. This is a, you know, I visited the Niagara Power Project about a couple of weeks ago just to check where we are with our next-gen Niagara life extension and modernization program. That's a $1.1 billion program between now and 2034 to really revamp, modernize our Niagara Power Project, our flagship asset, so that it can serve the people of the state for the next 50 years. I've met with Daniela Piper, our new regional manager there, and Trish Lombardi, our head of project delivery. And they have reported to me that we are on track. In fact, we just finished the controls upgrade on unit 12, and we are right along on schedule to finish this project. Next slide.
Really great press over the last few weeks in western New York on all of that. So, all the media, you know, picked that, has picked that story up. Trish, I got a little airtime on at least one of the local stations that I saw. So, it's been a great, you know, positive story. And I received, you know, multiple comments and feedback as I'm out about. So, a great story for the region.
Yeah, the team, they've been doing a great job. So, pleased to report. Next slide, please. Last front, oh, next, this one? Also, by the way, Mr. Chairman got really great press. We are going to be the first utility in the United States to demonstrate the use of green hydrogen and blending it with natural gas to run a power plant. In our case, this is a power plant on Long Island in Brentwood. It's a peaker plant, you know, these are the plants that are used that the hottest of the hottest days when demand for electricity is high. And this is important because we need to explore all of the potential technologies to decarbonize our power plants. Green hydrogen is only one of the technologies we're looking at. We're going to be looking at short-duration battery storage. We're going to be looking at long or multi-day duration battery storage. So, these are the kind of technologies that we will explore and see, and then eventually use to decarbonize our natural gas power plants in New York City and on Long Island, while keeping the reliability and the resiliency of the systems. Very, very excited to do this, and it, we will actually do this sometime in October and November, when we will test the use of green hydrogen, again, the first of its kind in the United States. Next slide, please. I was with the judge last week, last Friday, in Messina. And one of the things I did there was to check the progress of our SmartPath upgrade of our almost 80-year-old transmission line from Messina all the way to the Adirondacks. And I am pleased to report that our team has completed about a third of this project, and it is going to be on schedule to be completed for June of 2023. Great job by everyone under difficult circumstances, especially with all of the pandemic shutdowns related and supply chain issues related to the pandemic. Good recovery by the team, and we are on schedule. So, as you can see here, these are the kind of installations that we're making so that cleaner renewable power from upstate can flow to the rest of the state, especially downstate. Next slide, please. We continue to work with our customers. One of our strategic initiatives is to partner with them to help them decarbonize their own operation. This is the roof of the Jacob Javits Convention Center in New York City. It will be the largest rooftop solar and storage in Manhattan after it is completed by, on March 2022. So, Sarah Salati and her team are overseeing this project. This is, we're doing this in partnership not only with Jacob Javits, but with Siemens Energy. Next slide, please. The canals. We continue to reimagine the canals. If you recall, last year during the pandemic, we quickly put together a program, we called it staycation, so that canal communities and New Yorkers upstate can enjoy the canals as a recreation asset. And we have expanded that this year. We're calling it the On the Canals Excursions. It's already ongoing as we speak. It started a few weeks ago, very, very well received, overbooked, and we're just so excited to, again, provide recreational opportunities for New Yorkers, especially for New Yorkers along the canal communities. Next slide, please. Okay, I think that's it. And the next will be...
Any questions for Gil?
Questions.
The initiatives, as said, the Niagara Power Project, you don't have any billion-dollar investments in Buffalo or western New York or any region, so it's appropriately gotten the recognition and the visibility that it deserves and the impact it has directly and indirectly. But Judge...
My question's on canals, Gil, is that I've had a lot of people approach me about the availability of accommodations and people that want to, you know, transit the canals from one end to the other, about the availability of accommodations along the way so that they, they can make arrangements to, you know, do part of it and the next day do the next part of it. So, we ought to be teaming with locals on making accommodations available and to publicize it that. So, I think that's something that we could partner with people and do some economic development along canals as well, so.
Absolutely. We're actually doing that, Judge, in Amsterdam, and we're looking at other locations. So, more to come. We'll give you specific update in future meetings about the priority projects that was announced when, were announced when this initiative was launched in January of 2020. Good point. We'll do so.
Yeah, I recall accommodations being part of one of the options that we included in the reimagined canal work, right? Wasn't it finding along the way different ways to stay? Yeah.
That's correct.
Anything else for Gil?
So, I know that Gil, you think glamping opportunities that are being developed along the canal, how is that going, if going at all?
It's going well. We have one in Skylerville, and part of this, the On the Canal Excursion, so there are four or five other spots where you can do, they don't want to call it glamping, the one in Skylerville is glamping, but the rest are, I would say, enhanced camping along with kayak. Kayaking, it's with a partner called Tenter, which is, by the way, a great company. They were founded in the Catskills five years ago. Now, they are in 40 states. They provide turnkey camping services. So, we partnered with them. And again, you can camp, you can kayak, you can bike along the Empire State Trail. And so, it's a, you know, it's a good program, as I've said in early, you're well, you know, full reservations, and people are really enjoying it. So, we're excited, and future updates, we'll give you a more update on the other.
You're welcome to be our glamping representative. I know you're, you know, boater and...
I'm good glamping.
You can be our glamping representative, and we'll start a glamping committee, and you'll be able to report back.
There you go. If I could add one more thing. So, last year during COVID, because my husband and I are boaters, we have our boat at a marina right at the mouth of the Nida River. And there were a lot of people who just couldn't go anywhere. And so, the marina owner and I put together these little trips, right, into the city of Syracuse. We set up brochures so the folks that were there coming through and stuck could go to the Erie Canal and the Historical Association and just try to keep people busy while they were stuck. And so, it generated a lot of interest. And as a matter of fact, that particular marina won a national award for the way it hosted its people through that crisis last year.
Great.
Great.
Well, you're definitely chair of our glamping.
That seals it.
Yeah. It's locked and loaded, all right? All right, Gil, thanks very much. Eves, you're gonna hand it off?
Yeah, thank you. Good morning. So, once again, Eve Noel, SVP of Strategy and Corporate Development. And today...
Same technical difficulties. Frozen again, Eves. Can anyone else, Gil, you want to pick this up and back?
I will, I will, I will pick it up. Next slide, please. So, this is just, again, a process by which we went through to create the appropriate scorecard and milestones to check that we are on the right path for the implementation of our strategy, Vision 2030. Next slide, please. So, as you recall, we have five strategic priorities and five foundational pillars. So, each one of this, so we have 10, we have specific tactics and owners, deliverables and desired outcomes, budget, et cetera. So, this is the way we manage our business, and this is how we're going to report out, not just to us, executive management, and to the board. Next slide, please. So, as you can see here, the scorecard is the one that we will use to check the health of our business on a monthly basis. That's, that's going to be, that's the one that I just reported earlier today. Next slide, please. As I've, as I've shown you before, this is just a little bit more detail on what we mean, for example, for commercial availability and the other KPIs. Next slide, please. Now, for the dashboard, this one, we will produce and present to you our board every six months, so July and December. And in between that, around October, November, as we usually do, we will have a board, a strategic planning session to tweak and to enhance, to make adjustments on our strategy. So, that, that will be the cadence that we will have for you. Next slide, please. So...
Yeah. Oh, sorry to interrupt, but I wanted to just mention that, sort of like, the dashboard discussion is broken up into three components. One is, hey, our progress against the implementation plans, which, you know, Gil alluded to earlier. The second is our performance against the outcomes, which are the 30 measures that we specifically identified during Vision 2030. And then finally, the third component is, are the big rock capital projects and our progress of spend against those big rock projects. Yeah, I didn't want to interrupt, but I wanted to get into a bit of the details for you, Gil.
Go ahead, Eve, if you can pick it up. Is this your, is this the last?
And this is my last slide, yeah. So, and in the nutshell, what we designed is two sort of mechanisms for reporting up to the board, providing you a monthly pulse check on, hey, how are we doing with regard to our operations? How are we doing with regard to our people? How are we doing with regard to our finances? And then we have the Vision 2030 dashboard, which every six months provides you like, hey, we set these targets, how have we done against those targets? And that's it. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Eves. Gil, obviously, as a board, strategy's top of mind and top of priority for us. Given all the team did to successfully navigate the operational challenges of COVID, we're excited to pivot back to a proportionately, you know, a strong focus on the longer-term view and our key strategic objectives. So, look forward to, you know, these enhanced tools to help us evaluate, monitor. So, appreciate the efforts there and look forward to the continuing dialogue. Any questions for Eves or Gil on any of that? And a source of running dialogue for us, so.
It has been. No question, but just again, I congratulate the team in putting this together and helping us as, from a board perspective, be able to see the progress and performance of the team, which is, as we've always talked about, its outcomes and results that we ultimately want. And having a measure for you to do, to measure yourselves and the performance of mine yourselves is important, just as important as helping us as a board be able to then measure management on how they're achieving the outcomes and the results that we expected. So, good work. And it's agile and continues to be...
Real-time monitoring as opposed to just look back analysis.
Very good.
Yeah. We look forward to, we're excited. All right.
Okay. Next, I'm thrilled to have Joy Ditto, president of the American Public Power Association. In the United States, we have over 2,000 public power utilities. She is our lead, and she is based in Washington, and she makes sure that we are aligned and we are heard in, in our policymakers, especially on a national level. But more than that, Joy, let me transfer the mic to you to make a very important presentation.
Thank you so much, Gil, for having me. Are you guys able to hear me okay? Thumbs up? Okay, awesome. Well, first, thanks again for, Gil, for inviting me to do this. I'm going to present an award to your, to the chairman, Chairman Colwell, and, and thank you all as members of the Board of Trustees of NIPA for having me. Gil suggested before I make the presentation, which you're previewing right now, that I give you a tiny bit of additional background about APPA and, and sort of our objectives, and then how NIPA is interacting with us, and then present the award. So, I'm just going to take a few minutes of your time to do that and happy to answer questions as well. But APPA was established in 1940 in Washington, DC. As Gil mentioned, there are over 2,000 publicly-owned utilities in the country in 49 states and five territories, all but Hawaii, which is unfortunately where my mom and my stepdad live. But nonetheless, we're in all of the other places, and we have very, some very large members. NIPA is considered one of our largest members, as is Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, which has 1.4 million customers, utility customers. But then we have some extremely small utilities in Orlando, Oklahoma. There are 93 customers that that utility serves, for example. So, a lot of diversity in our membership. 50% of those 2,000 serve less than 5,000 meters. Of those 2,000 public power utilities, about 75% are direct members of APPA. The rest, you know, plug in elsewhere through state and regional associations that then plug in with us. We at APPA focus on the federal issues primarily. However, we occasionally will be asked to provide some expert advice or testimony at the state level or the regional level in very targeted circumstances, and always at the request of our members in a given state. We do sometimes, one of the examples of that is when there are municipalities or states looking at forming a publicly-owned utility or selling that utility. Sometimes they will, they want our expertise in that matter, and sometimes we will weigh in, and those circumstances, that's one example. But our focus is 99% at the federal level, and we have about 65 subject matter experts working on your behalf in the Washington, DC forum, this fun place up here. So, our offices are in Arlington, Virginia, right, right by the Pentagon, right across from Reagan National Airport. So, come visit us when you're up here. So, briefly, our vision at APPA is to shape the future of public power to drive a new era of community-owned electric service. Our purpose or mission is to partner with our members to promote public power, helping community-owned utilities deliver superior services through joint advocacy, education, and collaboration. And we really are focused on kind of five big buckets, and that also comports with our strategic plan. So, advocacy is a primary driver of why we were formed. And when I say advocacy, I mean regulatory and legislative advocacy, as well as some agency advocacy and advocacy in the media. Also, utility operations and technical services, including things like mutual aid, which I know NIPA has been an extremely valuable partner in providing mutual aid as far away as Puerto Rico. And so, we, we work to coordinate national-level events. We don't get involved with kind of the smaller regional and state-level storms, but we do coordinate national-level events and across the country. We also provide professional development and knowledge sharing, news and information through our publications. NIPA's been featured many times in our Public Power Current Newsletter and our magazine. And then we also focus inwardly and make sure we're providing, kind of looking at association excellence and some of the KPIs and things you were talking about with NIPA, we're also looking inward and making sure that we're providing optimal value to our members for their dues dollars. In terms of our strategic direction, our four big buckets kind of comport with what I just said, but advocating for public power. One of the others is association excellence, but two are kind of in line with some of the things I've heard NIPA is focused on, which is promoting grid security and then moving public power forward. So, looking at all of the utility, the future work, which I know NIPA and the state of New York is very forward-looking in that regard. So, NIPA has been a member of APPA since 1980 and a longtime member of our small R&amp;D program called D, Demonstration of Energy and Efficiency Developments, and has received over, has received many D grants, eight in total, since 2005. So, you've contributed to the program and received grants in return. Also, NIPA is, participates in our Reliable Public Power Provider Program, or RP3, which is a program, a peer-supported program, where public power utility peers evaluate each other's reliability. And NIPA is a diamond level, the top level, RP3 designee. They are also, you all are also, we created a new program called our Smart Energy Provider Program, which is a similar type of program where there's a peer evaluation of various elements. And we created this program only back in 2018, 2019 timeframe, and NIPA is one of our first designees of the Smart Energy Provider Program. Again, looking at some different categories, kind of in that public power forward element, the utility, the future elements, and the decarbonization pieces that I know you all are very focused on as well. So, with that, I'll turn to appreciate NIPA's membership, appreciate your leadership of NIPA, and want to turn to another element of what we do, which is engaging with our, the governing bodies of our members. So, as publicly-owned utilities, our members are governed by boards like you all, locally-elected officials, mayors, city council people, and then again, appointed or elected boards. And we formed a group a number of years ago to ensure that we were getting the perspective of our governing boards when we were coming up here to Capitol Hill and elsewhere in DC to advocate. So, we have a group called our Policymakers Council, which, similar to our Board of Directors, has regional representation from across the country. That policymakers group, you have to be nominated by your utility CEO to be part of the group. And then you participate in helping us advocate on behalf of public power here in Washington. It's a very special group. And we, there is an award that was created a number of years ago as well to honor and recognize leaders in that group, those policymakers that we call the Policymakers Council, those folks who are leaders with... the Policymakers Council, those folks who are leaders within that group. So that was, that's already a leadership group and then there are leaders within that group. So I'm very pleased to say that your Chairman, John Colm, has received what is called the Spence Vander, Vander Linden Public Official Award, which again was created in 1984 to recognize personal service to APPA by elected and appointed officials. It honors Spence Vanderlin, Vander Linden, I'm having a hard time with that name today, of Harlan, Iowa, who was the first Chair of the APPA Policymakers Council. So any elected or appointed member of an APPA member utility who has actively participated in APPA for at least five years is eligible. But again, a lot of the folks who get recognized participate directly in our Policymakers Council group. So again, appreciate so much and, and congratulations to John. We, we actually delivered these awards at our national conference, which happened in Orlando, Florida in person about a month ago. And we had a virtual component of the conference about two weeks ago as well. So we are, he has received the award in the mail, but this is just to acknowledge that, that that occurred and he was recognized at that conference, at both the in-person conference and the virtual conference. So appreciate again his, your leadership, Mr. Chairman, and again, the, the support of NIPA in the broader public power community. So with that, yes, congratulations.
Tomorrow we'll have another president.
Well, Joy, thank you very much. Appreciate your being here today to again present the award. I can confirm receipt in the mail. It was well delivered and is now proudly displayed at home. So thank you very, very much for the recognition and consideration, Gil. Forever indebted not only for the nomination, but obviously I accept this on behalf of all of you, NIPA. It's not for me, it's for the great work that all of you continue to do and the leadership you display each and every day across this industry. So it's been an honor for me to serve the organization, this board in particular. Talk proudly of the great work we do and the great team we have. And small recognition, but very much appreciated for the, you know, the tremendous efforts that all of you display each and every day. And I'm proud to be associated. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much. And Joy, thank you very much for joining us today. Mr. Chairman, congratulations again on behalf of everyone at NIPA and the New York State Canals.
Again, thank you very, thanks so much, Joy. Have a great day. Thank you. And Gil and all, much appreciated.
Mr. Chairman, I want you to know that, as I told you last night, in another life, I represented municipal elected and got actively involved with the power authority. And I think that activity was a pride of getting NIPA to join APPA. They were very helpful in my endeavors and my representation. And I think NIPA brings a lot to the table for APPA. Vice versa, APPA provides a lot of opportunity and knowledge and information to the power authority. So it's a great organization. Or as well deserved.
Very kind. Very kind. Gil's always, you know, talk proudly of the work that the APPA does and American power and our leadership in it. So as always, incredibly proud of all we do to help lead the way. So well done.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Take care. Have a wonderful afternoon.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joy.
Okay, next, just thrilled for, for this next part. I'm going to ask Lisa Wonsley to talk a little bit about our Future Leaders Scholarship Program and our PTEC Intern Program. Just, just proud of this program, proud of Lisa and her team. Lisa?
Thank you, Gil. Good morning. So I'm Lisa Payne Wonsley and I'm the Vice President of Environmental Justice here at NIPA. Thank you for the opportunity to share some of the successes of our inaugural programs under our DEI Commitment Number Nine, which focuses on STEM and opening career opportunities for young people in underserved communities. Next slide. So just to refresh your memories, Commitment Number Nine focuses primarily on building a pipeline for future New York State energy industry employees. The first initiative, the NIPA Future Energy Leaders Scholarships, provided $10,000 scholarships to students across New York State. We did this in partnership with industry organizations and existing community partners. The second initiative under this commitment is the Pathways in Technology Early College High School Program, or better known as PTEC. This program is an IBM-created innovative learning model, which allows eligible students who attend participating high schools to gain industry knowledge and experience through mentorships and a paid internship. NIPA will also assist in building curriculum by providing information on current and, and energy industry needs in order to develop the students' professional and their technical skills. The result is an associate's degree in a discipline related to the energy and utility field. Next slide. So this year, our Future Energy Leaders Scholarship awarded 10 students of one time, $10,000 scholarship to pursue a STEM-related four-year college degree. We did this with the help of five industry and administrative partners, the American Associations of Blacks in Energy, the Eagle Academy Foundation, the National Action Council of Minorities in Engineering, the National Society of Black Engineers and United Neighborhood Houses. The eligibility criteria were as follows. Candidates must be residents of New York State and good academic standing with a cumulative grade point average of 80% or above, reside in the underserved community and demonstrate economic need. Next slide. Our inaugural 2021 class of scholars represented communities from all over New York State. There was one student from Western New York, two from Northern New York, two students from Central New York and five students from New York City. And if diversity was one of our goals, we certainly achieved it. Out of 10 recipients, five students were of African descent. One student was Muslim, two were Asian Pacific Islanders, one student was transgender and one was of Native American indigenous heritage. Here are the photos of each scholar and the captions indicate their colleges and their majors and their career choices. Students will be attending Loyola College Chicago, Columbia University, Fordham University, Nazareth College, Boston College, Mercy College, Cornell and several CUNY colleges. Here today, we have two of the scholars who would like to share, briefly share their stories with you. First, I would like to introduce Malik Robinson, who graduated from Nottingham High School in Syracuse and will be leaving soon to attend Boston College and major in chemistry and environmental engineering. He's accompanied today by his parents, Robinsons. Malik? Following Malik will be Fatamata, Fatamata Debo, who recently graduated from Claremont International High School in the Bronx. She will attend Fordham University in the fall, majoring in computer science. And she's accompanied today by her father. So Malik, you go first.
Good morning. My name is Malik Robinson. I'm from Syracuse, New York. As you've heard, I went to Nottingham High School and I will be attending Boston College in the fall, majoring in chemistry. This scholarship means a lot to me. It signifies support for students seeking higher education and the betterment of our communities. I thank NIPA for this scholarship and I intend to do my part to show what a worthwhile investment it was. It makes me want to succeed so that I can give back to the youth of my community, wherever that may be. In the future, I plan to continue my studies through graduate school and possibly even a PhD. I ultimately want to become a chemical engineer specializing in alternative fuel and travel the world, making a difference. Once again, I would like to thank you all for the scholarship and I'm very thankful for this experience.
On the Holy Cross, guys, BC, you know, I don't know. But I find you into an institution nonetheless, okay?
My daughter's a senior at BC. She's going to look you up. You're going to love it.
Awesome.
Great, great school.
We stop and watch her on your way, all right?
Hi, everyone. My name is Fatamata. I graduated from Claremont International High School and I will be attending Fordham University. And for starters, I just want to show my gratitude to NIPA. And as a first generation and my parents being immigrants and me being the oldest sister of 10 siblings.
I still have you be. That's, that's. That's a lot.
Now you can imagine how hard it is for me to even think about like going to college because of its expenses. And college has been my priority since I was a little kid and NIPA just gave me an opportunity to even think about going to Fordham University. And I just want to say thank you. I've always want to try like to be a role model to my community or people around me, especially my siblings. And I just broke this cycle since my parents never went to college and this is my first, I'm a first generation. And I just want to show my siblings that anything is possible and NIPA just gave me that opportunity to like go to Fordham University and pursue a higher education in computer science and also get back to my community. I'm from Mali and technology is now really developed there. So I want to pursue a career in computer science. I don't know what that is yet. But hopefully I'll pursue on that path and get back to my community. So thank you.
Congratulations.
All right. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Next slide.
More to come, right?
Exactly.
Yes, I told him he had a good start.
We'll be ready for you, okay?
So since our DEI plan was approved late last year, we joined existing PTEC partnerships in three high schools in New York State. The Energy Tech High School in Queens, whose college partner is LaGuardia Community College with an associate's degree program in mechanical and electrical engineering. B Solar High School in Buffalo, whose college partner is Erie Community College with an associate's degree program in computer science and electronics. And Anida Herkema Madison Bowse's in Utica, whose college partner is Mohawk Community College with associate's degree programs in cybersecurity, computer science and mechanical and electrical engineering. So on June 28th, we began an all virtual internship program with teams of five students from each of the schools. Each group is led by a NIPA employee who serves as a project facilitator and each student was assigned a NIPA employee who is serving as their mentor. Each group will work on NIPA-specific projects and give presentations at the end of their internship. I would like to come back at a later date to give you a final update on how these internships went. But today I have one of the students, Adina Hasek, to speak to you. Adina attended Thomas R. Proctor High School in Utica, where she joined the PTEC program. And she recently graduated with her associate's degree in mechanical engineering technology from Mohawk Valley Community College. She will give a brief overview of her experience as a NIPA PTEC intern. Adina?
Hello. It's so nice to see everyone. I'm, as you said, I'm from Utica, so I, I have never come down here. This is my first time coming down here.
We never let you go back.
So I wanted to start off by saying that the internship has not only opened up many job opportunities for me, it has also introduced and taught me about my work life outside of college. When I was in college, I was a full-time student and I was also working full-time as well. So that was really hard to manage, especially in mechanical engineering. But I, through this internship, it's actually showed me that, you know, after college, working is a lot easier when you don't have, when you don't have professors and you don't have so much homework. And it's given me a chance to showcase what I am capable of doing throughout not only the project, but the meetings as well. The project we were tasked with consists of electrifying 50% of NIPA's fleet vehicles completely by 2030. My group and I are almost fully ready to present this project. Being able, being able to access NIPA's databases for the fleets has been a great advantage in figuring out which cars should be replaced and with what electrical cars they should be replaced with. We actually, I have a mentor, his name is Brian Everett. I don't know if anybody knows him. Lisa doesn't know. So he helped me actually access the database. I could see how far the cars are going from the Clark Energy Center. And with that, I was actually able to see which cars I need to replace. And that's helped me a lot. My favorite part of this internship, if I had to choose, has to be getting to see the Clark Energy Center site or getting to be here today in front of you. The site was very interesting. I especially enjoyed getting a rundown of the control room and seeing how intricate and important everything is. This internship has broadened my eyes to different jobs I have never thought of looking at. I am more prepared to start my career than I was before and for that I am thankful. Thank you for your time and for this internship.
Let you go. I should give you a little cautionary tale. Once you start work, you're going to be working for a long time. Unlike college, there's no four-year limit. So you're starting on a long-term venture. So enjoy.
Thank you. Well, I like working. I do like working. I just, I like being more hands-on. So I don't like sitting. That's my.
Congratulations again.
Thank you so much. That's great meeting you.
Great job. Congratulations.
You'll still look back and wish.
Wish you.
She was in college. I said. So it was actually Gil's idea to have these students come and address you themselves. And as you can see, NIPA's investment in their futures is absolutely a positive, life-changing experience. I'm very happy to be part of this and the fact that NIPA has asked me to work on this is just a life-changing experience for myself as well. Thank you for your support and encouragement. I want to say a special thank you to the families for traveling with the young people and also my team for making this presentation, but the, both of these programs possible. Are there any questions?
So just a great job, Lisa. Congratulations to you. I mean, you're combining both the priorities for NIPA, which is exposing early education around technology, but also a more diverse workforce. So I just, I encourage you to keep it up. Great. Congratulations to everybody else, but also congratulations for bringing this to life.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Go do some fun things.
Wait, this wasn't fun?
Dean already said this was the highlight, getting to meet the board. I mean, she said it was the best part of it.
I'm going to try to see the eyesight.
That'll be a little bit fun.
Thank you so much.
All right, Lisa, great job. Again, enjoy the rest of your stay. Congratulations. Thanks so much. All right. All right, Mom. Congratulations. Enjoy BC. All right, Dad. Well done.
And thank you very much, Board of Trustees, for your support and your guidance. I think we're off to a good start in building the pipeline of more diverse employees, not just for NIPA, but for the clean energy industry. So thank you again. And now we're going to shift to our return to the.
Exactly.
Return to work. Return to the workplace.
No, workplace. W means workplace.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. My name is Christine Pizzo. I'm the head of HR and administration and I'm giving an update about our return to the workplace plan. We just, this workplace, all the workplaces. But throughout the pandemic, we have had our incident command structure and team help guide our decisions about coming into the workplace to maintain health and safety for staff working on this, on the site and staff at home. Their role has shifted and while they're still here to maintain the programs that we have, look at the guidance, the guidelines and monitor it, my team is working on developing the longer-term plan to increase staff presence in the workplace. So as you know, we've never stopped coming into the, into the workplace. And over the past year, we've gradually increased the presence of staff throughout the sites, consistent with state guidelines and maintenance of health and safety in order to fulfill the work that we need to do, not only on the site, but at customer sites as well. Prior to the summer, about 75% of staff were either working full-time or part-time. So we always had, had a presence. Our summer plan that we are, have introduced for June, July and August is increasing. is increasing the presence of staff that were working remotely up until this point. And they're coming in a minimum of three days every paid period. Again, consistent with the guidelines that are in place at the time and will always, you know, continue to evolve around that. Our plan overall, so we have two phases throughout the summer, one in the summer and then one in the fall, is informed by benchmarking. We're looking at peer results, information, local, national utilities, agencies to see what their plans, their plans are and what they're doing for the workplace reentry. But our plan is also being guided by certain guiding principles that are informing our work rules and decisions. One, health and safety of our staff is paramount. So we're making sure that the conditions that we create within the organization maintain that. Second, we want to make sure that we fulfill the needs of the business and getting done what we need to do, but also being cognizant of the, the marketplace and maintaining our competitiveness in the workforce. We want to support inclusion and make sure that we're listening to feedback from staff, adjusting and then also creating rules that are equitable across the board. We also want to increase collaboration and foster collaboration. So really make those times in the office meaningful when we are not on a, a remote, a Teams call or, or doing things virtually that we really foster that collaboration and then agility. We want to be able to pivot if we need to, if conditions change and continuously respond to that. So our fall plan, we will increase the presence again in the fall. We're working on that now. The plan will be created with just the same sort of rigor that we've taken throughout the, this pandemic. Again, looking at benchmarking, listening to staff feedback, monitoring the internal workplace and the external market so that we can create a plan that's meaningful and that really brings everyone back to working together. I know we're all here together today. It feels so great to be here and see all of you and talk to you. And we want that same experience for our staff to have them come into the workplace and get that same benefit of collaboration and collaboration and community that we want to foster in the organization. And we'll present that to you at the next board meeting in September.
Christine, there's a lot that's being explored now and written about the psychological impacts of isolation. Have we included in our program that type of counseling that's available to our workforce?
Yeah, throughout the pandemic, we have been focusing on mindfulness, E A P program support. We've increased the number of employee training around how to manage your workload, how to collaborate better, you know, at home. So we've had, we've kind of blended the mindfulness and being able to sort of cope with at-home working to helping them with work rules and tasks around organization and management. So we have provided that, that support throughout.
Was it utilized? At what extent was it utilized?
Yeah, well, we had, whenever we conducted trainings, they were full. Every, every training was full. When we, we did that about mindfulness, we had a great participation rate there. We do surveys at the end of most of our trainings and sessions. And we continue doing them, you know, because we got such great feedback. And we're, you have the support of Gil, really kind of reinforcing the importance of mindfulness. And, you know, to be able to try to be present more and, and, you know, give people those coping strategies. So he's been supportive in that way as well.
What's our current position on the whole vaccination front and our messaging around that? Do we have a handle or what do we know in terms of what percentage of our employee population is vaccinated? Where do you see that evolving?
Yeah, well, I can pass that to Paul, but I'll say that our vaccination is voluntary. We're highly encouraging them to get vaccinated. Paul is our, the head of our incident command team. He is still maintaining numbers on vaccinations. We have many processes to track that. And we'll continuously monitor as people, you know, flow in and flow out of the organization. So it's a lot, it's a living thing monitoring. So Paul, if you want to just provide some of that background.
So from the perspective is we have not taken a position where we mandate employees for vaccination as of yet. We're keeping our finger close on the pulse of where the industry goes. And in the private sector, the utility business, right now voluntary reporting, about sixty percent of our employees have voluntarily reported that they're vaccinated. But based on some data points that we have, we estimate that it's probably closer or approaching eighty percent of our employees have been vaccinated. We can't compel employees to, to report, but we know that not everyone is reporting for whatever their reasons may or may not be. So we feel that we're in relatively good shape based on the data that we have right now.
Our infection rates, we haven't seen any bounce. I mean, we're.
I'm gonna say after about six weeks of relative boredom in the COVID world, which you well just deserve the respite, things are starting to pick up. So we have updated our countermeasures plan, which has been our guiding document. It's a living document. But we've updated it to reflect, you know, the most current CDC, New York State Department of Health goal and our learnings from Delta right now. As of today, we have two employees who are out ill with reported COVID. Contact tracing has been done, so that's done. We have two employees who are under investigation right now that they've reported signs and symptoms. And three of New York State's economic development regions are at stage one of our countermeasures. Long Island affecting our Flint plant and our Brentwood plant, the Finger Lakes, which has relatively no impact on us. And the Capital Region, which affects some of the canal sites in Albany. So we're keeping our finger closely, you know, on the pulse of this. We monitor the data every day. I have a full team meeting every Monday morning and we meet ad hoc as needed right now. And based on the countermeasures, as we see more and more disease, the pace and frequency of those meetings increase. And the main effort, the main work effort we have going on right now is we are pre-planning for testing. If, if and when we either mandate testing for non-vaccinated employees or when we get to stage three in our countermeasures, we mandate testing for our employees. So we're pre-planning for, for weekly testing of those employees who were or were not vaccinated and we'll see how that goes.
So Paul, any, any plans in the future to possibly use a vaccine pass?
And it'll be integrated in our plans. We discussed integrating it into our plans to speed up the processing of employees, guests and visitors. We just haven't gotten to that point where we think we need to do it just yet or is it any convenience? But we support the Excelsior Pass. And as a matter of fact, as a point of information for everyone, if you re-update your data in your Excelsior Pass, you will get another six months extended to your pass if you have been vaccinated. So.
Where have I heard that?
I'm sorry.
I did that this morning by the board members.
So I hope, I hope the board has full confidence in, in the I C S team that we have. You know, the best interest of the authority, the best interest of citizens of state of New York. And always our mission is to employ, you know, employee safety and continuity of operations. And we're going to do everything we can to ensure that even if I have to go back into control room myself, which will be a disaster.
Thank you. If I read the paper correctly this morning, since I read it very quickly. The governor has now kind of pushed down decision-making to the county level, right? And so how does that complicate your job? Because we, your operation is across the entire state.
It means we have a lot of reading and research to do. And that is on our weekly meeting, that's actually the first point on our agenda is what are the updates based on CDC, County, Department of Health, whatever have you. So yes, we have a lot of reading to do. And again, as a state agency, we try closely to follow the recommendations of New York State Department of Health. But we, we're always more conservative than Department of Health, CDC, our countermeasures. As a matter of fact, you haven't been involved, but welcome to the team. Countermeasures both look at the economic development regions of the state and every individual county of the state. So if we see a flare-up even in a county, that will trigger a certain level of response. We have five different response levels. All the way from business as usual, which would be zero, to stage five where we actually have employees living at the facilities without going home for anywhere for two weeks to a month.
Information that Paul and team gathers and assesses will inform the current and future plan and will adjust accordingly.
But Mr. Chairman, you know, we always focus on bad. So we're in the middle of a pause, right? So it's a, it's a moment that we should all recognize. Fantastic work that everybody has done on this thing. I mean, we always assume that the worst, that the fact this authority has done, has performed incredibly for the safety, health and protection of our workforce during the entire pandemic. It's, it's a good time to just tip a hat and say, awesome job.
Well done, Paul. We're pleased to be back and hopefully we can continue as a board. The view is much better here than online. So thank you very much for the great work because Michael just recapped. Okay, Gil, are you good with that?
Yeah, next.
Ready to pass the baton to Phil?
That's correct. Phil, it's all yours.
Phil, with an update on your expanded or expanding world of responsibilities and opportunities.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, trustees, staff and guests. My name is Phil Toya. I am president of NIPA Development. And I'm here just to give you a brief overview of the group and some of the projects we've been working on and look forward to working on. Next slide, please. So NIPA Development was formed earlier this year. Really, main focus has been on supporting NIPA's Vision Twenty Thirty in support of New York's CLIPCA goals, Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. We're right now focusing on helping NIPA become a, the leading developer, owner and operator of transmission in New York State. We're also supporting Vision Twenty Thirty by looking at preserving and enhancing the value of hydropower within NIPA. And also working with NIPA Operations and other groups to pioneer the path to decarbonize the natural gas, natural gas fleet within NIPA. The, the main focus to, to support those areas, really right now, the three areas are looking at new transmission for NIPA. The large-scale renewables in, within New York State as well as developing utility scale storage. So the main focus right now has really been on transmission. That's what we're seeing of the bulk of the development. I'll get into some of the projects and ongoing within New York State. But we're also, again, actively engaged in the large-scale renewables and utility scale storage. Next slide, please. Very high level, the group was, the, the basis for the group was the project and business development group that was formerly housed under Commercial Operations. So that group under Garish Bahal came over to NIPA Development Team. Within that group, we have a project development group focused mainly on transmission. We also have a project development group looking at the energy storage and utility scale, our large-scale renewables. And then we have our licensing and development group, which is really supporting the licensing of, of the transmission projects in these projects. The second function under our group is the asset strategy. That's headed up by Tim Zandi, former regional manager for the C N E region within NIPA. And, and that group is really supporting development in identifying projects. That's our studies and standards group. So they're out there looking, working with NIPA's staff as well as consultants, identifying the projects that will enhance NIPA's portfolio as well as, like I said, really help us meet Vision Twenty Thirty and the state's emissions goals. And then we're also supported there by a project management individual. She came over from utility operations. So again, bridging that gap between the development group and utility operations. We're also working closely with finance and legal as well as other groups within NIPA to really competitively bid on these projects and develop the best projects that are out there. The other part of the asset strategy is working with the utility operations and helping from an asset management perspective, looking at projects that will enhance the existing portfolio, preserving the value of hydro and again, building projects that will, will support NIPA's vision. Next slide, please. So these are the projects currently that we have underway within the transmission. We have Smart Path, which has been discussed previously at, at these meetings. Smart Path Connect. So Smart Path, I'm sorry, is under construction. Smart Path Connect is in the licensing phase. We're moving forward with that from an Article Seven standpoint. Central East Energy Connect, formerly known as the Marcy to New Scotland Reinforcement Project. That's the project we're working on with LS Power. So that's also under construction. Two projects that are in the early stages, one from the competitive standpoint, Clean Path New York. We submitted a, a response to an assertive tier-four R F P for tier-four wrecks. So that is in the competitive process now. We did submit proposals on that. And the next project is in, in the real infancy stages on the southeastern New York Public Policy Transmission Needs Project. That was an order issued by the Public Service Commission. It's in the New York I S O's hands right now. We expect that to hit the streets sometime in August and that would be a competitive process as well. So NIPA is actively engaged in looking at that process, anticipating the, the introduction of that and putting together proposals for that. On the energy storage side, we are supporting NIPA operations as well as other groups on the North Country Energy Storage Project. We're also supporting the Brentwood Hydrogen Development Project, looking to, to support them in that role. And One Seventy Four Global, which is a battery storage project that is to support Con Ed system. And it's co-located on, on our Zeltman Astoria project. So we're supporting that project as well. That was originated in the old Commercial Operations Business Development Group carried over. We're supporting that. Next slide, please. This is just a map to give you an idea of the active transmission projects in the state, the locations and the scale. So right now, there's five active projects in New York. NIPA is involved in three of them. Smart Path Connect, other in New York. That's the green lines running horizontally on the nor, on the northern portion of the state. There's also a southern portion of that that is being developed by National Grid. Smart Path is, is in construction. Those are the red lines extending from northern New York down towards closer towards central New York. And then the Central East Energy Connect, which runs from Marcy, the Marcy area in Utica over to eastern New York and the New Scotland area, Albany area. So again, NIPA involved in three out of the five active transmission projects. Just kind of giving you an idea here. Those projects are really geared towards helping get the renewables that are being developed in upstate New York, get them across the eastern interconnect, the central east, total east interface and getting them through that congestion so they can make their way down to New York City area. You know, just very happy to be in this role, the support from the development team, utility operations, legal and finance. We're treating these projects that we've been working on more on a project-type basis. So we develop a project team. Again, focused, the main focus being the development group, reaching out to utility operations, legal, finance and other support groups to build those project teams, trying to, you know, remain aggressive and nimble and agile in, in the development of these projects and really putting together a, a good portfolio of competitive projects that in, you know, enhance NIPA's portfolio and help NIPA and the state meet the C L C P A goals and our Vision Twenty Thirty. So, thank you.
Appreciate your leadership and excited with, you know, the carve-out and, and the team and the focus that this appropriately will, will receive going forward. So good work. Questions for Phil on any of that?
Phil, the Empire State Line, that built to reinforce the resilience of, of the transmission system, given taking off some fossil fuel.
Yes, that, that project was, again, a competitive process. NIPA did participate in the, in the bid. We, we were not successful in that. But that was, again, to respond to the retirement of several fossil plants in western New York. They created transmission congestion. So that project is to relieve the congestion in the western New York area. Some of the underlying system, the lower voltage, one fifteen K V, two thirty K V out there. So that is to, to respond to that need. And that, I believe, is under construction as well.
Anything else for Phil? Anything else for Phil? Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, Brad's up. Here in a ball for Joe on the operations side.
Hey, good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Trustees, NIPA and Canal staff, members of the public. I'm Brad Van Aken. I'm the Senior Vice President of Operations Support Services and the Chief Engineer. And here today, I'm happy to be presenting on behalf of Joe Kessler, our Chief Operating Officer. Next slide, please. So first, I'll talk a little bit about our business unit metrics. Our year-to-date generation market readiness value of about 96.4% is driven primarily by the outages at BG Unit Three, as well as the Flynn Plant, which you were briefed on a little earlier this morning. These unplanned outages originated in April, and as as the year progressed, started waiting a little more heavily upon this metric. As you know, we set a high bar for our GMR target, and in the past, we've done a good job of meeting this. However, this year, we unfortunately experienced two significant equipment issues, and that put us into the forced outages. However, the good news to report is that as of 20 minutes ago, we we have returned the BG Unit Three breaker back to service. And it was just, it's available for dispatch in the market. And I'd like to congratulate our team, our engineering team, project management, the operations folks at the plants who worked very hard to get some creative ways to get this unit back in service and available for the market as we're still in the summer load.
Yeah, because I was just gonna say, we haven't had red in a long time. And I I think it's notable that Joe had you do the presentation.
Very timely.
I've asked in the past, even though it's red, our customer experiences and compromise.
No.
This is red relative to our own standard relative versus relative to delivery in the market.
Exactly, exactly, Mr. Chairman. That's it. We set a high bar for ourselves. We drive ourselves hard. I mean, just to put it in perspective, our plants in Niagara, St. Lawrence, our biggest, you know, the horses themselves are, you know, well over our established metric. They're like 99.9%. So just to kind of keep it all in perspective of where we are, but we do, we do drive ourselves hard in this area. The remaining metrics, we're all meeting our exceed our targets. So no need to talk about that. Next slide, please. This one, we wanted to give you an update on, this is part of our TLM program, the Niagara Switchyard. And this is part of the larger TLM program that was approved in 2012 for estimated cost of 726 million. In early June, work within Bay 25 was completed, which included the replacement of three 230 KV breakers, six disconnect switches, two potential transformers and various other ancillary equipment. This work required that modifications and replacement of the equipment foundations as well, which is significant work. Doing a lot of foundation work in an existing substation, very challenging. However, this work was also part of a larger program that continued on through the height of COVID. We never stopped this program of our TLM. And kudos to our team again, once for just kind of driving through all this and keeping these large scale capital programs moving for the reliability of our system in New York State. The overall Niagara Switchyard LEM is approximately 60% complete. So we're we're making good progress there, moving along. Next slide, please.
And are you where you expected to be? I see it's 60%.
Yes.
That where you expected to be.
Yes, we're on target and on budget, too. The next slide, this is a talk a little bit more, some of the details about one of the projects Phil just mentioned. And the Marcy and New Scotland Transmission Upgrade Project was officially renamed to Central East Energy Connect, spanning across Central East Load Zone from NIPA's Clark Energy Center to new substations at Prince Town and Gordon Road, while they will also continue on to New Scotland. This transmission project aims to unboil the transmission congestion constraints and enable significant additional power flow transfer. Through NIPA's partnership with Ellis Power, construction began on this in the spring of this year, 2021, where their first milestone reached in May, when we energized the first five mile segment between the towns of Prince Town and Rotterdam in Schenectady County. Works progressing from the east to the west. And NIPA-owned assets will begin in construction in 2022. And the overall project completion is estimated for 2023. NIPA and Ellis Power also recently completed a maintenance emergency response agreement that outlines NIPA's long-term project investment and role in maintaining all of the overhead transmission assets, facilities for this entire project. The New York ISO is also filed with FERC on behalf of the Power Authority for cost containment measures for the project. With the specifications for the Marcy Switchyard finalized, the engineering plans, we're advancing the station upgrades at Clark Energy Center, 345 yard work, which will begin in early 2022. So for this fall, we have two additional outages are scheduled, and we'll be able to complete another 11 miles of the project before the end of this year. That's it for me, Mr. Chairman. In closing, I'd like to thank you and end my report.
Other questions for Brad? Okay, well done.
Okay.
Thanks very, thanks very much.
Sarah? Yes, good morning. It's still the morning and and a special welcome and hello to Trustee Gonzalez. I look forward to meeting you in person in September. As Chief Commercial Officer, reporting under the operations group with respect to Vision 2030, feel particular focus and ownership over three of the five initiatives, in addition to all the others as an EMC member, preserving and enhancing the value of our hydro, supporting the responsible transmission or transition off of away from natural gas by 2035. And last but not least, supporting our customers and state with respect to the clean energy transition. Next slide. When we think about preserving and enhancing the hydro, a couple, there have been a couple of things that I've been focusing on the last couple of months. One is evolving our electricity supply strategy to be looking at our P and L holistically when it comes to all of the power that we have to sell, either bilaterally through our contracts, through economic development, or other new supply structures that have been developing in the group, or the the unallocated amounts that are being sold into the merchant market. That being said, have increased the capabilities of the group in terms of commercially instructuring those, and there'll be more to come. And I'm happy to share that with you at a future date. That being said, with respect to the merchant volumes, we are essentially on track by the end of the year, only within 2% of what what is expected to support the certainty around our budget and the commitment on our financials. Special thanks to Jenny Lou's team on the excellent execution of our volumetric supply strategy or volumetric hedging strategy with support and the mid office from risk. When we think about economic development, again, this is provides budget certainty for organizations across the state to invest in the economic growth and development of New York. They also provide budget certainty and financial certainty for NIPA relative to our bottom line, too, as these is as an example of bilateral contracting. That being said, in the consent agenda, as a result of great work by Keith Hayes' team, the key account managers and all of the back office individuals, we have 15 new customers that are going to be taking down over 20 megawatts of power, securing and preserving over 2,700 jobs and committing over half a billion into the economic investment in New York State. Next slide. With respect again to the strategy, clearly looking at the outcomes that New York State wants from an energy policy standpoint. But hand in hand with that, I'm very focused and continue to be on the most effective delivery of that. I'm pleased to share that across all the products and services and business lines within commercial ops, we see positive year-over-year P and L trajectories. With respect to clean energy solutions, a special shout out to Dom Lucci and his team for executing on over $200 million in capital projects annually, as well as the key account managers that support the development of the pipeline, which fundamentally are going to supporting the state's 185 trillion BTUs reduction in the next few years. On E-mobility, there is one yellow there, but fundamentally, it's very much on on track. The the number four represents those charges that have been fully commissioned. We do not put anything on the scorecard until they've been commissioned and operational, and we have over 100 chargers that are currently in construction that we anticipate will be online by the end of the year. So we'll be very close to the the annual commitment of 124 charging ports. Couple of highlights there, we've seen increased due to our higher, over 50% higher utilization than anticipated of our charging network, which is great because that's supporting, again, the electrification of the system. And we have also seen great partnerships with Stewart's and Morabito in terms of the the public-private partnerships in developing these projects. And then and that's a special recognition to Fabio and his Zellin mean team. And then under Emily Bolduc, the last line, again, well ahead of our our targets to date. Couple of things to highlight there, docs, the Department of Corrections and Community Services just finished commissioning over 20 megawatts of solar. And when it comes to New York Energy Manager, we have a contract with JFK where we are censoring 14 of their buildings and providing them energy management services. And that's, that's why. And finally, as I said, fundamentally looking to execute on our Vision 2030 strategy and to do it in the most cost-effective and efficient way possible, looking at driving increased revenues from products and services that our customers want and having it have an impact on NIPA's bottom line for its continued financial viability. And at the same time, again, improving our our margins across all of our customer visiting products and services by driving continuous improvement. You'll see here with Clean Energy Master Plans, it's an example of the evolution of our products and services, looking at integrating and providing even more holistic advisory services, playing on all the technologies that we have at our disposal and elevating our relationship with our customers to a strategic level, even more so than we have today. Secondly, in working towards a virtual power plant and having 25 megawatts by 2025 controllable load, again, taking all the technologies that are behind the meter, we partnered with R and D, and I have a pilot at the White Plains Office where we are participating with the Cadenza Energy Storage project in responding to demand response, or more specifically, dynamic load management. So we're taking the learnings there, as well as the as well as the product development discipline that has been incorporated into the commercial ops group over the last year in order to iterate and provide the grid flexibility services that, again, provide our customers with value as well as NIPA. And then finally, like I said, looking at continued delivery of efficient and effective processes to ensure that we're getting rid of waste. Mike Quontanens is working on this, and he's embedded in engineering and construction management. And it's a great partnership between the existing project managers and engineers, where they're being empowered through the discipline developed by Toyota and other other organizations historically around lean and agile to to identify ways to make their jobs easier and to eliminate waste. Typically, the cycle time is about a year. So we have to wait for a little bit more time to get a statistically significant sample size to to fully track the results. But again, great work done by Dorandi and his team, by Emily and Sangita in driving the VPP, and then again, in ECM with Keith and and Dom and Mike Hu with continuous improvement. So that is my report. Great progress really across the board when it comes to, again, preserving, enhancing our hydro and driving more sophisticated electricity supply offers, and then behind the meter with products and services that our customers want and that will also deliver on our clean energy transition.
Any concerns you have, Sarah, as you look ahead, your crystal ball, the balance of the year, out in early 22, anything that's going to get your way? Or anything we need to ensure you have the right access to resources and support to continue the the positive trend in execution here?
Well, I think, you know, what what's what's really positive about Vision 2030 and the dashboards and the initiatives that that Eve's put together and that you will be seeing at a regular basis, it really enables the executive management team to align on the key outcomes and on the key work streams on on an annual basis. So what I look forward to is, you know, finishing to present the electricity supply strategy and have that get embedded into the into the Vision 2030 dashboard and tactics and initiatives such that the organization can holistically align behind it and execute on it because we know with NIPA, once we we have our enterprise, we we deliver incredibly effectively. So nothing, nothing in particular, the 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 reality is that we have a market that is evolving, and we have to evolve with it. We have to be agile. We have to pull our support services to 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 support the products and services that we want, and we have to be continue to be creative and evolve, in particular, our electricity supply offerings that both act as a defensive and offensive play relative to preserving and enhancing the largest, the largest contributor to our bottom line still.
All right, well, great.
Sorry, one question that I had, Sarah, is, you know, and great work on looking for solutions around providing, whether it's electricity or storage options. There had been a little softening around the energy efficiency work that your team was doing, obviously, you know, as a result of the pandemic. And and the team, you and the team and and as well, working with Adam, have come up with very good innovative ways to help our customers finance energy efficiency projects. Are you seeing an improvement in or pick up an interest in pursuing some of those? You know, again, it was a little bit of a concern. Yeah. Are you starting to see any plans for a recommitment to those kinds of projects?
Yeah, so I mean, for sure, the COVID had a had a pretty much a full stop and halt by many of our larger government agencies. And there was concern or was concern around their their budgets. Again, I think what what's great about what we're doing relative to the financing options is is by moving these potential loans off of the balance sheet, the 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 sky is the limit in terms of what arguably could be financed, and NIPA's own balance sheet is not in any way capping that. Again, we're putting it in front of our customers and their attractive rates, their fixed rates. And so so I think that we are, we are seeing the fact that the financing options will be just as attractive as the ones they've had in the past, if not more attractive. And so that in and of itself relieves any concern around purely financing. And then, again, with COVID, with the pause, we'll have to wait and see, you know, we have seen some level of pickup. And look, the CLCPA is is a law. And we're looking at supporting our customers delivering on that in in the most effective way possible. And and that's why we're elevating our strategic relationships with them. So it, we haven't, it's picking up.
Okay.
But it's not back to the full force it was prior to the pandemic.
Great, good to hear, because I do think this is an important part of the work. In addition to creating and producing energy, we also want to, you know, reduce the demand for that energy. So that energy efficiency part is also an important part of the work that you guys are doing. So.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Sarah? Okay, thanks very much, Sarah. Well done. Adam, we seem to be trending as expected and directionally on plan. So.
Yes, I mean, it's all, it's all good news in terms of being on plan and on budget. Through six months, these are the actuals. So our actuals are basically hitting the mark on the revenue side, generations below slightly because of lower than originally forecasted hydro flows out of Niagara primarily. But again, it's 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 we're pretty close on to our year-end forecast. Yes. We need some, we need some rain dancing. Transmission revenues are ahead of target from the fax revenues, which is a revenue we get based on congestion and congestion pricing through the transmission system that is run ahead of what was previously forecasted, as well as other transmission revenues we'll see towards the end of the year also will be trending up. Margins in the nonutility, some of that is energy efficiency, and some of that is EVOL and some other energy storage projects. And some of that is more of a timing issue in terms of when those revenues will be realized. We're hoping that will narrow towards the end of the year. Again, it's all told, we're we're net-net tracking towards the plan. Operating expenses are also tracking lower. The one thing that's, you know, sort of kind of masking that a little bit is the allocation of capital, which is based on the the rate of spend on our capital program. which is based on the, the rate of spend on our capital programs. And we do see that also catching up towards the end of the year. So we'll see a little bit more on the operating expense side between now and the end of the year. But overall, everything else is tracking through six months. The next slide, please, will go to the end of the year. So at the end of the year, again, all the themes continue to carry forward. As you can see, the transmission revenues even higher. That's because our new transmission revenue requirement is been figured out in the month of June and it starts from July first to June of next year. And that is higher than what was originally forecasted. So we see some of that between now and the end of the year and it'll carry into next year. Margins on utilities still where they were slightly better and expenses coming in somewhat under. And again, tracking to plan, what I want to call everyone's attention to is that when we do the low case, high case range, we're showing, you know, not too much on the lowercase. We don't see a big risk of coming in much lower than where we're projecting. But we do see an opportunity to do somewhat better than forecast by the end of the year. And some of that is going to be the result of the bending the cost curve initiatives that we're doing and some of the work around the OPEB expenses, which is referring to the post-retirement medical health costs based on the merger of the canals and Medicare Advantage. As soon as we get some confirmation from our actuaries and outside auditors, we'll be able to sort of book those in the, hopefully in the third quarter. And we, we are expecting to see some benefit from the pension expenses this year based on the performance of the state pension system. But other than that, we're, again, we're tracking well between now and going into the end of the year.
And as you look at that spread between the, the low and the high, I assume your belief is that we've worked through all of the COVID impacts that that's well in hand in terms of expenses. I mean, obviously all dependent on whatever happens with the Delta variant, but you're, that's, that work has been done and is behind us in terms of recouping and all of that.
That's correct. And we're working with the state, you know, we are a sub recipient to them in filing for FEMA, unlike our other FEMA issues like Puerto Rico and others. So we're going through the state and we'll be subject to what however the state files. And we're working closely with them to put our claims in and make sure that we get what we're entitled to get back. But we're going to be conservative and make sure that we're not exposed.
And OPEB and pension, I take out of the operations world, your operational band's fairly tight at this point. You're feeling really good about where we are, where we're going, so.
Yep, absolutely.
It's great news. Great to be back on a, you know, more predictable state course, so.
Absolutely. And as Sarah was mentioning in her report, because of the hedging program and everything we're doing there, again, there's a lower volatility in that area. And that's what we're trying to get to, something where we can plan going forward, how much cash we're generating from the business so that we can continue to finance the large capital investments we're going to make in transmission and Niagara and these other major capital projects.
I think that predictability, nice to see the, you know, results there, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right. We've had, oh, what, ten days, two weeks ago, we had finance and risk as well as audit committee meetings earlier today. We had a cyber and physical security meeting. So at this point, I'll ask each of our chairs to report out the actions and activity of those discussions. And first up, Tracy McKibben, Chair of the Finance and Risk Committee.
Great, thank you. As you said, two weeks ago, on July fifteenth, we had a finance committee meeting. We adopted minutes, we received two staff reports. And then there are five items that we adopted and that we're now presenting before the full board of trustees for adoption. The first is a recommendation for the trustees to adopt the Energy Efficiency Revenue Bond Resolution. Next is the recommendation for the trustees to approve executing an agreement to purchase renewable energy credits made available to the authority by NYSERTA starting in 2024. Third is the recommendation for the trustees to approve capital expenditures in the amount of $595 million for the Smart Path Connect project that we discussed earlier. Recommendation, and then the next is a recommendation for the trustees to approve a modification to the finance term for projects under the Energy Efficiency Program to allow for maximum cost recovery period of up to thirty years. And that's changing it from the previous twenty-five years. And then final is a recommendation for the trustees to approve the revisions to the Finance and Risk Committee Charter, which is really just to add the risk element to that. And I now ask for a motion to adopt the above five items.
So moved.
Second. That was, thanks Dennis for a call for the vote. Any other questions? So a good discussion in the committee meeting, but anything else from anyone? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Most motion carried. And as always, appreciate your leadership and the good work of the committee, Tracy. Thank you very much. Mike, cyber, physical security. Our house is secure?
Yes.
Or so we hope. Catch us up.
Mr. Chairman, today the Security Committee heard about NIPA's cybersecurity posture and a response to numerous high profile cybersecurity incidents that have been reported in the media as of late, none of which, happy to report, have impacted NIPA. NIPA's cybersecurity team continues to monitor the threat landscape in close collaboration with industry, state and federal partners and make adjustments to its cybersecurity posture to keep pace with current emergency emerging threats. And against this backdrop, they've adopted the, the profile of benchmarking against best practices while having collaboration, communication and collective defense. It's really the state of the art in terms of the best you can do in this environment. We also heard about NIPA's site visit and inspection activities pursuant to New York State Executive Law Article 26, which mandates periodic security reviews of the energy chemical pipeline industries and a report out of the effectiveness of security regulation and practices. We were also updated on the briefing between NIPA Canals Security and Cybersecurity Infrastructure Security Agency of the Department of Homeland Security. These partnerships are considered essential to continue development, the NIPA security program to protect both NIPA and canals. The only other comment is that I was a proud participant in the original development of that whole program when I was in the legislature. So it's great to see that it still continues, there's still resources being done. And it really compliments the team for doing really good work and having a constant approach this.
Great. Any questions for Mike? Anything else on the Excel surpass before we move on?
I urge all New Yorkers to download it.
Okay. And as I referenced earlier, two weeks ago, we also had audit committee meeting chaired by the judge.
July fifteenth, the committee met and received an internal audit update for the 2021 audit plan from Angela Gonzalez, the Senior VP of Internal Audit. And in the consent agenda, the updated audit committee and internal audit charters were presented. The audit committee approved the audit committee and internal audit charters. The committee made a motion to recommend adoption of the charters to the full board. That's before the board today. And I would ask for a motion, I would make the motion to adopt those charters as a matter.
Have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mike. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, our last item is the consent agenda of which there was a typical volume of information that I'm sure you comprehensively reviewed and we appreciate your efforts in doing that. If I could ask for a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Before I call for the vote, Sarah mentioned earlier in her report, it was upwards of fifteen awards and significant impact, but it was told earlier, we've got a late breaking development, a press release to be issued. I think we're expanding our reach a little bit. Dave Work has a couple of comments on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dave Work, Senior Director of Contract and Program Operations. I'm here on behalf of Keith Hayes tonight. Before we get into the allocations, just wanted to talk about some changes we had to the recharge New York State legislation. As you know, the recharge program is made up of nine hundred and ten megawatts of power. Half of that's hydro power, half of that being market power. That power is further broken down into buckets, one of which is a hundred megawatts that have been capped for small businesses and not-for-profit corporations historically. Small businesses and not-for-profit corporations typically have the largest job and capital investment accounts per megawatt, but they're also the smallest internal bucket, which has been nearly allocated for several years now. This group of customers, for reference, accounts for 200,000 jobs or over 200,000 jobs and over nine billion in capital investment. Really half of our program as far as jobs and capex, but it's only about 10%, just about 11% of the total program as far as megawatts are concerned. So historically, this has required us from time to time to hold applications till power's turned back in. So recently, we requested a change in law to shift an additional fifty megawatts, you know, reallocating internally into that bucket from the large business bucket. That's going to allow us to make meaningful allocations, return the greatest economic development to the state of New York. That change was recently signed into the law. And on behalf of NIPA, I would like to thank the governor as well as Assemblyman Steve Stern and Senator Sean M. Ryan, who sponsored the bill. So good news all the way around on that front.
Super.
So we have several noteworthy recharge New York allocations this meeting. Cree out of the Mohawk Valley, we're recommending them as part of the, the materials in front of you for 11.9 megawatts. They're going to create 320 new green jobs as a result of that and over 500 million in capital investment. Another company, Integro Holdings Incorporated, the Finger Lakes, they're getting recommended for 5.8 megawatts with a total of eighty-five jobs committed and eight point five million in capital investment. Bond Secadors Charity Health System, 1.2 megawatts, eighteen hundred retained jobs and more than five million in capital investment. Moving on to the Western New York Hydro Power Program, we have polymer conversions out of Erie County. They're getting recommended for 300 KW. It's going to be 165 jobs committed, 10.5 million jobs in capital commitments, or 10.5 million in capital commitments. Last but not least is Surmax Ceramics out of Erie County, we're recommending them for 640 kilowatts. They're going to provide 320 jobs and 13 million in capital investment. I'll take any question.
All of which is included is in the consent agenda for which I had a motion in a second, unless there's any other questions. A call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda carried. Thanks very much, Dave, for the editorial commentary as well. Unless there's any other matters to come before us, that completes our agenda today. As I said before, it's great to have most of us back in person. It was great to see everyone face to face again. Appreciate all the efforts for the last eighteen months to keep us safe and healthy and more importantly, operational and effective. So kudos once again to Gil and the entire team and organization. I'll be happy to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Tracy, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Reading is adjourned. We're back September thirtieth is our next go around. And if not before, look forward to seeing everyone then. Enjoy the rest of a sunny summer. So, and once again, be welcome. Hopefully you enjoyed your first gig and we look forward to many more. So thanks so much for being here.
Great meeting, award winning chairman.
Thank you very much. Have a great day, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you.